Alrighty, it is now six thirty-three. We're gonna call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order at six thirty-three. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give the roll call.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Protem Cuevas?
Present.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Pat Kearney to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by Pastor Dwight Dooley from Cavery Chapel, South Bay, will lead us in a word of inspiration.
May your heart be with me.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here and to be able to stand before the council and our mayor. And I just really do love what you guys are doing here. I just wanna share a couple of words and then we'll pray. But the Lord looks from heaven and beholds the son of men. And from the place of his habitation, he looks upon all the inhabitants of the earth. And I love that because that's what this council represents. As you have come together, you're those that have been elected, selected, and chosen to be a part and to help this community. For in this community is just people who want to have work in a home, in a safe place. And that's what you're providing here. And that's the awesome work of what one God does, one nation under God, indivisible. It cannot be divided. He has given us all one heart. And that's a heart to do better and to do better for our generations yet to come. And that's what our God wants for every one of us. And that's why we are here. That's why this is a nation that people come to and not run from. Father, I thank you for this council and for our honorable mayor. Father whom you have chosen, we pray, Father, that you will bless with direction, knowledge, understanding, as we are all gathered here for one purpose. You have fashioned our hearts all together, and that's a desire to do well. And we thank you that you have given us this opportunity, this day in our lives, to be used to bring a better community, stronger. As we come together, loving one another, sharing with one another, we are so grateful and thankful. So I pray for this council, Father, that where there is things that they may or may not agree on, Father, that you bring to them agreement. And, Father, that that would be settled and that it would be fitting in your direction for this beautiful committee of Lawndale. So continue pouring out on us wisdom and strength. And we thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Dooley for those words of inspiration and prayer. Okay, let's hear from our public safety report of Los Angeles County Sheriff Department. Let's hear from Sergeant Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable counsel. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for July seventeen through August seventh today. Last time we were here, I went over some crime statistics and I brought some more again to kind of give you an idea of what direction the city's headed in. So I'm gonna give you like, I'm gonna go over the month, so current month versus last year to date. And so there were zero homicides which last year and zero homicides this year. One rape last year, one rape this year from month to year. Robberies, there were two in this month, August twenty twenty-two. In August twenty twenty-three, there were zero robberies. August twenty twenty-two, there were ten aggravated assaults. And this month, this year, there were eight. Burglaries remained the same at twelve. Auto thefts, I'm sorry, other thefts went up by three, thirty-four last year to thirty-seven this year. And auto thefts were down considerably, seventeen last year to six so far this month, this year. And arson's zero this month and one in the last month. At the same time, the deputies responded to three hundred and fifty-four calls for service in the city of Lawndale for the period, which is, I think, a little bit higher than it was for the last period. And related to traffic collisions, there were eight reported hit-and-run traffic collisions, five injury collisions, and five non-injury collisions. And that concludes my report today. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the safety report? Yes, ma'am.
Nice report. Good job, Sheriff Department. And I also wanna say thank you to the lieutenant for being here again. I appreciate your presence, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Thank you for that report.
Now, let's hear from our Los Angeles County Fire Department. I had my, I'm gonna do my glasses. There we go. Is it Savo Bodo?
Saloda.
Okay, there you go.
Sorry, I yelled. I'm losing my hearing.
You got it down.
I'll try to bring it down a little bit. So, good evening.
Yes, sir.
I'm honored to be here on behalf of LA County Fire Department. And Chief Bennett was unable to make it. The scuttlebutt in the fire station is, he's at the Taylor Swift concert. So, I can neither confirm nor deny. So, LA County Fire Department for the city of Lawndale in July had two fires, non-structure fires. It looks like they were located off the southbound four oh five at Hawthorne as a rubbish fire and northbound four oh five, south of Inglewood Avenue, a grass fire. There were a hundred, it looks like a hundred and fifty-two EMS runs. And of those hundred and fifty-two EMS runs, the APU unit, APU twenty, responded to twenty of those calls in the city of Lawndale. There were two hazardous conditions without fires. And it looks like those were electrical power lines that were down. One was off of a pole, it appears, and the other one was off of a house. And it's a good thing those were phoned in 'cause most times those end up being structure fires, right? There was one service call, sixty good-intent calls, and it shows one false alarm. So, that's what I have for the city of Lawndale.
Okay, thank you for that report. Yes, ma'am.
Just one. The twenty calls that you said were A, B?
The APU.
Those are the ones that are, the nurse practitioners are going out and we can finish them.
Yes.
As an emergency room employee for a number of years, I appreciate that number right there and I appreciate that Lawndale's getting to be able to use that service, so a big thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that report.
Okay, let's move our agenda to oral communications. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you just come to the podium, if you would start with your name first, we would appreciate that. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. You don't have to wait for your name to be called. Just simply approach the podium when you see the person before you has concluded. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Deana, Lawndale resident. Just a couple of quick things. I got my sign, no outlet. Thank you very much. I also noticed Kingsdale now is paved over, so finally, thank you. That only took several months. And also, just chatter on next door is that we're getting a Sprouts over here where the old Pep Boys used to be. Also, good things coming out about that on next door, Hawthorne. Yeah, being a little jealous, the residents are a little jealous of Lawndale's progress and stuff. You know, bringing Target in now, Sprouts, and some other stuff popping up where we seem to be advancing and progressing and everything as to where Hawthorne's kind of like wah-wah. Anyway, thank you, that's it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, councilman and mayor. My name is Alfonso Fernandez. I believe I was here in May or April complaining about the property that is right here on Buhring. It's one five zero two six oh, fifteen zero twenty. It's on Buhring over here. And what happened is in November, it's gonna be three years that the house is empty. And we have a lot of problems with, you know, if it's been empty, we had homeless, we had rats, we had infestation. So, I came, I don't know if it was April or May, and somebody called me and said they're gonna do something about it. But since then, things getting worse. So, I appreciate it for you guys to do something about the property. Either, you know, support some fans around or tell the owner either rent it or sell it or do something with the property because, I mean, it's instead of helping the neighborhood, it's getting worse and worse. So, I appreciate it for you guys to do something about it. The property, the address is one five zero two six oh Buhring Avenue. Soon as you turn on the Buhring and Marine, it's almost right there on the corner. You can see it all the way.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Holly Osborne. I'm a retired engineer from next door. And I passed out a bunch of diagrams that I've done. The Green Line, as it passes through Redondo 'cause it comes right off of your section in Lawndale. And I thought you'd like to know what some of the problems are there. I have made some of these presentations at COG with charts, but it usually takes me two times to get through them. And I'm obsessive about trying to be as correct as possible. So, anyway, for these charts, just start right now at figure two. It's the third page. It's this one. And this is how the track and the layout looks as it comes from Lawndale, where it's, the row is narrower there. And it's also narrower in Redondo as it comes across. At seventy-five feet, before it widens to a hundred feet, the train goes right across to the railroad bridge, okay? So, now go to the next page. And what I've done is I've colored the top of it green. That's because if you looked at it from the overhead, it would look green because it's really a steep embankment and it's all shrubbery and grass and stuff. And so, this is really not all flat. It's flat part of it for the brown part, and then it's a steep, steep embankment. Okay, so the train goes across right now, and then there's all these pipes, pipelines there. I've counted four, there's four markers, different markers for pipelines. And there's also four in the drawings. There's two abandoned ones, but anyway, what's there is two Shell and a Torrance Logistics and a Crimson. The Crimson is knocked over. But I want to draw your attention to the pipelines that are on the west side, which is the lower side, okay? Because one of those goes down pretty close, only eleven feet from some condos in Redondo. And that's one where Shell had to repair it. When they were repairing it, there was a sinkhole that developed and it caused damage to the foundation of the patio. It took them two and a half years to repair, okay? So, that's what that red dock is. Now, there's two ways, if you add the tracks, if you add the LRT in, that they would go in, and I've shown cutaways before, they'd go on top of where this freight train is. And they'd have to move those pipes. And I'm not gonna go through the cutaways 'cause I've shown them before, but that's actually called the trench option. But just let me make it clear, there is no trench between Artesia and Gates in the trench option. It's all a grade, okay? It's called the trench option because it comes from a trench at one seventieth and goes to a trench in one eighty-second. But there's no trench between Artesia and Grant. Okay, now.
Time has expired.
What?
Yes, ma'am. Your time has expired.
I just was getting to the new one.
There you go. You'll be back next week. We appreciate it. And thank you for these diagrams. I know it took you some, a good amount of time to put these together. We appreciate you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Hello.
It was quite an achievement that over a hundred administrative citations were written on July the fourth. It was also quite important that the city staff observed the chaos of illegal mortars blasting away that residents have to experience every year. A month later, I would be interested in what is progressing. Has city staff been able to sort out any duplicate citations? How many citations were mailed out? What has been the response from those receiving citations? And how many citations have been paid at this point? Over the years, I've repeatedly introduced the city council a comprehensive fourteen-page report by the Orange County Grand Jury, which Mr. Moore and Ms. Hall were good enough to distribute. And this report discusses the impact of legal and illegal fireworks in several Orange County cities. Their study concluded that the use of illegal fireworks is significantly greater in cities that allow the sale of legal fireworks. This report pointed out that the use of safe and sane fireworks can mask the use of illegal fireworks. City staff would have witnessed how those illegal fireworks would hide behind safe and sane fireworks. A recommendation from this grand jury report was to declare a moratorium of fireworks sales for at least three or more consecutive years in those Orange County cities with legal fireworks to allow law enforcement and for officials in these cities the opportunity to curb the escalating use of illegal fireworks activity. Although it is encouraging that this city is getting serious on illegal fireworks suppression by considering a moratorium on safe and sane fireworks, this needs to be placed on the agenda as soon as possible. With those failing the audits on last year's sales, there might be only three organizations eligible to have a booth next year. These need to plan for alternative methods of fundraising, of which there are a multitude available. These organizations need to realize that even the sale of safe and sane fireworks not only promotes illegal fireworks, but is detrimental to the environment and creates its own safety hazards. In the twenty twenty-two fireworks annual report, the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission says seventy-three percent of all the estimated fireworks-related injuries in twenty twenty-two happened between June seventeenth and July seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Based on number of ER-related injuries, CPSC says the most dangerous fireworks are firecrackers followed by sparklers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Gary White, Lawndale. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I've been watching the TV with the, about the different council meetings and stuff, and it's a lot of it from us, the citizens, is all about two things, fireworks and metro. And I was reading in Daily Breeze and they had a lot of different thoughts, the cities around us, about metro. They were kind of like on the same page. They don't want it going there. Torrance didn't want it ending at theirs because it creates homeless encampments. Metro as a whole has a terrible, terrible safety record. And, you know, if it was a private company doing that, they'd shut it down. Not one life is worth it. And, you know, just even their buses, they just recently, like yesterday, some lady got run over by one of the buses. They gotta follow the same rules as we do. And on the fireworks part, I've told you before that I was the scoutmaster here in Lawndale for several years. And I saw the good side of the fundraising of the fireworks. Also, I've noticed in other cities that even safe and sane fireworks are illegal, they still have a lot of the illegal fireworks going off there, too. If you wanna get somebody's attention, you gotta get in their wallet. So, you either enforce it or you don't. But to take it away from the kids' programs and stuff, as long as they're on the up and up, you know, or unless the city wants to move forward and give grants to all these little groups of Little League and such that hold these things, I would like to see it still continue as a safe and sane. Just, we just need to get into their wallets, the people who are breaking the law. And I wanna thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I am Ray Holler, homeowner from southwest Lawndale. And also, my parents own a house in southeast Inglewood, close to the Metro Green Line Station where there was a murder last Wednesday. So, that's a serious matter that happens here and there and always unfortunate. This time, it happened at a Metro station. So, that's a humble way of, and sad way of starting this presentation, where I will continue the best I can to, with Dr. Holly Osborne's excellent charts and presentation here. So, if you go, you can go to the last chart, I think, that shows the pipelines and where they're located at all. And the point of what Dr. Osborne was saying, besides all the detail in here, is that there's a, the train tracks will be moved to the west in north Redondo in this stretch here between Artesia and, and that's Grant, I think, over there, or twenty-five feet closer to some condominiums where there was a sinkhole problem when there was repair done to the tracks back a couple of years ago. And they're gonna move, they wanna move the train tracks, the freight train tracks, even closer to that. And to me, the point of all this is that there's just too much going on there that we don't think Metro has acknowledged all the things that are going on. You've got all the pipelines, you're gonna have to put three tracks, you've only got seventy-five feet. And there are certain regulations that, on the next page, you'll see this pipeline resolutions that Dr. Osborne has brought up from BNSF that says you're supposed to have twenty-five feet between pipelines and track. And that's a lot of stuff to put, to cram and jam, as the Metro folks like to say, into seventy-five feet. And we think that's, you know, what are your alternatives there? Well, you're gonna have, you could just grab a bunch of property to the east. And I don't think those people who live there along the twenty-five-foot wide embankment would appreciate Metro coming and seizing their properties by eminent domain. So, it's, we don't think it's buildable there. And that's one of the many, many reasons why we think that if you must build a train, a Metro train, should be built down Hawthorne Boulevard and not down the freight train right-of-way, which has all of these problems that Dr. Osborne has very detailed, in a very detailed way, explained. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. I never knew about these meetings. I was here to drop off some paperwork and this kind lady here told me about a meeting. And then I saw the format and I decided to come up to speak. My name is Dee and I lived at the corner of one fifty-fourth and Eastwood. Now, that cross street is known for having lots of accidents. I actually have a first aid kit near my front door that I run out to every time there is a collision. Last Thursday, there was a collision there. The fire department, as well as the sheriffs, came out. And I don't know what the solution is. I'm not, this is the second accident within three weeks. And as I said, I've lived there for twenty years and I have a first aid kit that I run out to every time there is an accident. We're across from Anderson School. And I know that there is a stop sign on Eastwood, but it's not quite, it's kind of knocked to the side. But I don't think that that's the solution. I'm not sure what the solution is. I'm not an engineer or a traffic control person. But I just want everyone to know that this is happening. My neighbors said that they were gonna call the city to complain about it because we're so tired. One day, there's gonna be a fatality there. And I, but because I found out about this meeting this evening while I was here, I thought I would come up, step up, and at least see the people I vote for. And I believe you as well. Anyway, thank you. And I think that's the end of it, right, for me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
I think I have a big mouth. I don't know if I need a speaker or one I would like to...
Yeah, if you can do it in the mic, 'cause she's gonna be recording.
Oh, yeah, there we go. So, I'm Joy Richardson from Senator Steven Bradford's office. And I just wanna say hello tonight. I wanna thank you personally, Councilmember Kearney, for coming out and helping us with our amazing, successful backpack giveaway. We gave over a thousand backpacks plus. There were meals, there were health screenings. It was just a great day. It was super hot, so I really appreciate you weathering that heat. And then also, I just wanted to remind you guys that Senator Bradford is sponsoring, and I brought flyers last time, Jazz Festival in the city of Gardena at the end of the month, I think, June, sorry, I know. It's August Sunday, June the twenty-seventh. So, I'm happy to be here. And if there's anything the council, the senator can do for the council, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, busy night tonight, lots of notes. And I'll try to hit at least part of them and leave part of them for my guy sitting here on my right, so that he has something to say. Deana, I'm glad, too, about getting Kingsdale paved. It was about time, so that was a really good thing. And I'm also excited about Sprouts. So, those are some really good things that we've got going on in the city. I'm kind of proud of where we're heading, so. Sean, Mr. Fernandez brought up that house. Since Mike's not here, is there anything you can?
Yeah, so that case, mayor and council, was that the city attorney's office is being prosecuted or gone through the process. I know it's being handled by the city attorney's office. Last I talked to Michael Reyes, he mentioned that it's, it went through the process and now it's been turned over to the city attorneys.
Is there anything we can do about getting something up there as far as, like he said, fences or road control or anything?
I mean, we can ask them, but they haven't been so cooperative.
All right. Holly, thank you again for the diagrams and all the work that you've put into this presentation. I appreciate you and Ray being so faithful and keep continuing to come here to speak with us regarding your concerns over metro. Randall, fireworks. I don't have a lot to say about fireworks. I believe that we do need to have a moratorium to get this straightened out and to take a pause. As far as how long that is, I'm not even exactly sure. I agree with you and I will bring up during my time at the end of the meeting, my concerns as well over the fact that it needs to be happening pronto because December is right around the corner. Before we know it, we're gonna be making applications again. So, it does need to move quickly. I'm in agreement with you. Gary, I'm thinking that you probably saw the article in the Daily Breeze pertaining to metro. But there was only two council people that, from Torrance, that are in agreement with Redondo and Lawndale on the no-build. So, keep that in mind when we see that. Torrance, I don't believe, and I'm sure that we'll hear more later from the city manager, I'm not so sure that we've convinced Torrance that it's the wrong thing to do is to build this thing. And fireworks, you're right. You have lived here long enough and so have I, that at one point, fireworks were a really big boost to our kids. But in order to have those boosts, certain regulations needed to be followed and certain reports needed to happen. And they weren't being hap, they weren't happening. And right now, with the out-of-control of the illegal fireworks, I think what our city staff has found is that if we go ahead and put a moratorium on fireworks, that doesn't mean we're not going to bring back fireworks. That's a moratorium for a while so that we can work on getting this thing under control. It's probably the direction that we've got to attempt to try. But I would like you, I like safe and sane fireworks. I am not opposed to safe and sane fireworks, but it's out of control right now. And that's what we're working to try to figure out. So, I appreciate your concern. Mr. Holler, thank you again for continuing with Dr. Holly Osborne's information. Again, I appreciate you guys coming and being faithful at, at expressing your feelings on the Metro issue. Dee, welcome to city council meetings. This is it. We meet twice a month, the first and the third Monday of the month. Since you're having an issue, I would like to have you speak to either Justin or Lieutenant's. Justin is our sergeant, and the lieutenant is sitting here as well. You've probably already met some of the officers, but maybe not them. Maybe that's a good place to start. Plus, I would ask Shaun if maybe Shaun might have something. Maybe he could pass a meeting, or a note to Michael Reyes about this issue and see if there's something we could do.
I would ask Public Works to meet with the property owner and talk to him about. I'm familiar with this area. It's my path to travel on the way to McDonald's every morning. So the roads in that area are very narrow, and we know, and there are both sides of the street, people park, and so, and it does have some sight distance issues, and I'll just lay the, meet with the property owner over there and see what, what kind of mitigations could be incorporated.
So see, there's the beginning of somebody hearing you, and that's exactly what we appreciate you coming and voicing it, so that we can get resolution for you. So let's work together and get that taken care of. Joy, always a pleasure for you to come out, and good work on getting those backpacks taken out. So please don't be a stranger. Come on out to our meetings. That's all I have.
Thank you. Let's hear it from the council.
Well, Sandra Rondus said everything. I just want to thank everybody that came up to speak tonight, and I'll pass it on.
All right. Let's hear it from, from the council.
You didn't let me nothing. For it, yes, for it.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight. A lot of good feedback from our community. I'll just touch on a few. I, going back to, 'cause it was mentioned, I know Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman mentioned the Torrance Council taking a look at possibly changing their position. I actually went to their traffic committee, and two did give a definitive stance on where they stood. And the other member also would like to relook at it. So it's not to say that they're not going to. I, I kind of, from the talks that I've heard, got a little bit of a different vibe in seeing that they might possibly overturn theirs. So that's still to come, and I know if there's any people that know of Torrance community members that would like them to change their position, to please ask them to go to their meeting that they're gonna have it. I'm not quite sure when it's supposed to be agendized, but that should be in the future. And then the other thing that I did want to touch on briefly is, and I'll probably come back to this at the end of our meeting, but this comes up a lot with community members and wanting to know traffic safety and streets and stop signs and whatnot. If we could possibly put a presentation on how they go about that, it comes up a lot, so I think it'd be helpful to get a little bit of a refresher on if someone has concerns about safety issues, how, you know, public work, how our public works department plays into that. With that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I do have a few things. Dr. Osborne, thank you very much for the presentation. It's very helpful, and I know you spent a lot of time putting that together, so thank you very much. Randall, thank you for the copies of the Orange County. I will read it, and we'll pay attention at that for when our decision comes along. With regards to the accidents on One Fifty-Fourth and Eastwood, is it possible to get a report of how many incidents we've had in the past two years in that area? Maybe we could look into putting a better stop system or flashing cross light or something to help lessen the accidents?
I've asked staff to, mayor and council have asked staff to look into this, and we'll get back and report back to the council.
Thank you. And also, if we could see where we are at with regards to the property that, that is having issues. You know, three years been a long time, so we should move it along.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. And as the council knows, and I'll just reiterate, a lot of times, it's not the city's issue. As, as you know, there's a change, I would say, I'd characterize that paradigm shift that down at our court systems. And so there's a lot of change, the priorities going to the higher crime cases, and then less priority on these, some of these things where we've had to take action ourself, as the council is aware. And this is, this thing's been lagging a little bit, but we'll check with the city attorney's office and see where we're at, what more we can do. This one is one of our, not our most egregious, but we definitely will look at it. We're concerned to processing it through.
That will be all. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out as well, who spoke tonight. Mr. Hernandez, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Like we said, we iterate, we'll make sure we take a look at that and see what we can do within our authority to, to make that happen. But we appreciate you bringing that to our, our attention, and no one wants to live next to that type of situation. Because I could imagine, I mean, rats and bugs, they just don't stay within the property boundaries. You know, they go into adjacent properties or what have you, so I'm with you on that. The Sprouts, it seemed like the, the Sprouts was let out of the bag, that I assume that it's public, you know, the public knows. So we do have a Sprouts that's coming up to the city of Lawndale, and we are excited about, about the Sprouts. And it does pair well with the Target. And so we're excited about this, about the Sprouts. So in case folks don't know the location, it's the location is right next to the Chevron on Hawthorne Boulevard, right before Rose Creek. So we are excited about that, so thank you for bringing, bringing that up. Dr. Osborne, thank you for your passion on this issue and on this item. You've been with this item, you know, for, what, twenty years? Since the, you know, since they, I've been talking about, you know, the, the different iterations of this project, the Sea Lion project. And to put together this diagram, I know that takes a lot of time, you know? I can feel your frustration that, you know, you want to put together, you know, your presentation, you want to make sure that we know all about it, that the public knows all about it. We're gonna continue to work with you, because this is a terrible thing for the city of Lawndale, and I would suppose also to the city of Redondo Beach and Torrance as well, but I don't speak for Redondo Beach or Torrance. So with that being, being the case, we're gonna continue to press a Metro on the, the notion that this is not a good project for our communities, and it's not a good project for the Redondo, especially in that particular area, you know, particular area of travel. So thank you for your, your, your diagram. And Ray, thank you for pitch hitting, you know, for, on the diagram. We really appreciate all the support. You've got to lend the communities the right to say, and just been very engaged on this, this issue. So thank you very much for, for being here. Real quickly, Gary, thank you for sharing your views on, on the fireworks and as well on, on Metro. There you go. Thank, thank you, Gary. And DeeDee, yep, once again, where is DeeDee? Oh, there you go, DeeDee. I don't have my glasses on, DeeDee, but I see you there now. Welcome to the city of Lawndale, the city council meetings. And yes, this is the body where you come in, if you have any issues, and not just if you have any issues, if you want to share some good news, right? Or some ideals within the community. This is definitely the, the place where we work together as, as a team, as a city council, and as a staff to make those things happen, that we can serve the community better. So we thank you for your presence here tonight. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, my, my newest colleague, Joy from, from Stephen Bradford's office, our senator, and he's been around for a long time representing us. I'm here in the city of Lawndale, and he does a great job in Sacramento, so we're glad that you're part of his, his staff, and thank him for the, the backpack, you know, giveaways. I used to attend those events, but I work kind of out of the area now, right? And they keep me on a tight leash, right? So I wasn't able to, to attend, but I'll try to attend as many of his events as possible. I just want to thank the senator for all he does for the city of Lawndale and for the backpack giveaway. I heard it was a great event, a very successful event. Thank you for what you do, because I know your job is very difficult as well and time consuming. And thank you for being here. And with that, we will...
Robert, can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Shaun, on the Buhrin property, if Mr. Hernandez is having erratic infestations, can't we do something about that right now? Isn't that a health issue?
Mayor and council, I have to check into it. I don't, you know, we don't, I don't know the condition of the property. Staff's verified there's vermin issues. We can certainly look at that, but I don't know if there's anything we can...
Yeah.
Remember, this is private property, so we have limitations on what we can do as a city.
Thanks, Robert.
Oh, you're welcome. Okay, with that, I'll, I'll wrap up my comments, and thank everyone once again for coming out. Let's move the agenda. Let's move to the consent calendar. Item F is a consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning item F?
If there's no additions or subtractions, I'll make a motion to accept the consent dollar as written.
And I'll second it.
Okay, the motion is made by Kearney that we approve the consent calendar and second it by Osrores. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing now with the council, please vote.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, a public hearing to introduce the first reading of ordinance number one-two-zero-two-dash-twenty-three for the allowance of the residents to keep chickens, hens, and their fowls in residential areas. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, mayor, council. Good evening. Mr. Reyes, he's on a well-deserved vacation, so I'm taking over for him today on this item. As the council is well aware, this, we've been working, staff's been working on per direction of the council, looking up various things, and we've brought a couple of staff reports for, for consideration. Staff received direction to move forward with drafting an ordinance. And attached to the staff report, staff has proposed a regulations for the keeping of, raising of chickens and fowl. Staff also looked at various cities that do allow chickens, which include Redondo Beach, Manhattan Beach, Hawthorne, Torrance. They're all found that allow, they allow chickens. They don't, they do not allow roosters. Staffs looked at other, other requirements under the Los Angeles County Code. So we follow the health code under, it's interesting, too, the county just contacted us about updating our agreement with the, the public health department. But they have specific requirements that, only requirement would be that they have to be thirty-five feet. So staff looked at various properties in the city, and a lot of the lots that are single-story or single, would have single house homes on them that are, you know, five-thousand square feet, or they're the eight thousands or larger in between those, set the five-thousands, the eight thousands, they, they'll be able to host them. It's a good majority of the properties in the city. We have some deep lots, so they will accommodate that. But they all, you know, they have to probably center them. We looked at them. Staff looked at the eight thousands and five thousands in community development. Don't have to center the location of them and just make sure they're not within the thirty-five-foot rule, and that's the county rule. We follow the county's rule. So other than that, we're recommending that folks have two chickens per the direction of the council, and we, and we looked at that's consistent with the surrounding communities. Therefore, staff recommends approval. That concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the staff report. Are there any questions to the staff report before we open the public hearing?
Just, just for clarification. So it would mainly just be single-family properties that would be eligible for...
Well, you know, as the council is well aware, we have some properties that were condos. They're single-family. So this is two, two properties. So if they have a condominium, like with one house in the front and one house in the back, they're a condo, so each property owner is allowed up to two chickens. And now, most of them are not subdivided for condominium purposes. Most of them just have two, two units on one lot, so it's one property. Yeah. We, we don't see that many folks. There are some folks we see have chickens already. We don't see a lot of folks stepping up and wanting chickens, so we don't think it's gonna be a too terrible an issue.
Okay. With, with that, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. It is now seven seventeen. The public hearing is now open. Are there any wishing to provide any testimony in this matter? If so, they can line up by the flag and... No, you don't have to be sworn in. You can just, if, if you're wishing to provide any testimony or comments, just come by the flag, and then comes your turn. We'll start with Ms. Dana.
Can I, Madam Assistant Attorney, do you have to be sworn in?
No, we did away with that.
Not for chickens.
Yeah, yeah, we did away with that. That's been a while ago, yeah, some court.
Okay, so there's my comment. Chicken Fest 2023. Is the city staff going to have special training to ensure chickens are kept in an orderly and regulated manner, really? You named all the surrounding cities that allow it. I'll get to that in a second. I'm sure like anything, it's fun because it's new, and then it becomes a chore because nobody wants to keep up, keep up on it. Some people in the city already have chickens, just because people want fresh eggs. I imagine when people move out of their residence, they will leave their chickens behind, just like cats and dogs that they do. Again, this will attract more coyotes, raccoons love chickens, and other rodents to the property. You had to do all this research for chickens in the surrounding cities, yet you haven't decided whether to put Alper cameras up, Alpers. All the surrounding cities have them but Lawndale. And isn't public safety way more important than fresh eggs from a couple of chickens in somebody's yard? Let's get back to the cameras and safety in the city instead of chickens. So good luck with your chickens handed or fowl.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Once again, city staff has had to spend hours researching and writing another staff report on chickens. Additionally, what was the cost for the city's law firm to research and write the new code section along with the resolution? Tonight's staff report on this item mistakes that at the April seventeenth, twenty-three meeting, the city council voted to, in favor of allowing chickens by residents within the city of Lawndale. In a review of the video of that meeting, the mayor made it very clear they were not voting on whether to allow chickens, but to bring back a draft ordinance for review. It was promised that those interested in chickens would either attend the meeting or submit comments to assist the council in their decision to allow chickens. It was only after reviewing a draft ordinance and hearing comments by interested residents that a decision to even allow chickens would be considered. As there are already chickens in Lawndale, one unintended consequence is that people will now be more aware of this issue. As many of those with chickens now, as many of those with chickens now might find themselves in violation of the thirty-five-foot requirements, neighbors will now know when they're in violation. How many of the handfuls of residents eager to have chickens will meet these codes standards? Unlike some cities referenced in a previous staff report, no permits are required and no monitoring provisions are mentioned. No specific health and safety measures are provided. When can residents expect city council to spend as much time researching more important items that deal with crime and safety of residents rather than items that bring no value to the community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is my second time up here. I know a little bit about this subject, and the thirty-five feet, it's Dee again. I don't know if I have to introduce myself again, but the thirty-five feet from, from the residences mean thirty-five feet one way, thirty-five feet one, the other way. So that's seventy feet. The chickens will have to be, when you measure it, tell me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't it be seventy feet? Thirty-five feet from, from, from the one side and thirty-five feet from, from the other side? So you're looking at placing the chickens somewhere like, you know, in the middle of a lot, and the lots in Lawndale, not many of them are that big, because we've, we've built homes. We have, you know, duplexes and triplexes and condos and all these things. Also, there are diseases that go along with chickens. And the, the home farms are notorious for, for starting these diseases. I don't want to be biased or anything like that, but some of these birds are, come from out of state, especially south of the border. And so they come here and they cause this, you know, they bring the, the, the viruses with them, and they infect the commercial crops, commercial farms. And so that was the blame about ten years ago, that it was the home garden chickens that caused the, the problem. Now, I don't remember if it was bird flu or, or what it was, what the, the chickens had, and all these chickens had to be destroyed. That's my little two cents on, on the subject. But I'm sure you guys did the research and know more than I do, because this is totally new for me. I didn't expect to come up here to speak about chickens. All right, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll close. Well, we're in the testimony, and we'll, we're not only, we're, we're in testimony, but we'll close the public hearing. It's now seven twenty-three. The public hearing is now closed. We bring up the dice for any conversation, discussion.
I'll, I'll just go, since I'm the one that had brought this forward. I think we discussed it in depth at our other meetings. I think we all kind of have a handle on, or each of us fills on this topic. I'm still of the opinion that, you know, one or two granted the... granted the homeowner has enough space, you know, isn't going to, you know, decimate our city. And so for that reason, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance as staff has drafted.
Anyone else want to have any comments before? Okay, so anyone wants to?
I'll second that motion.
So the motion's been made by Suarez that we adopt the, the first reading of the ordinance and seconded by Cravis. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'm going to ask the city attorney to, to read the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it is ordinance number one two zero two dash twenty-three. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Landale, California, amending chapter six point one six of Title VI of the Landale Municipal Code, which will allow for residents to keep chickens, hens, and/or fowl in residential areas.
Thank you. With the council, please vote.
For item number seven, the motion passes with Councilmember Kearney and Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman voting no.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is also a public hearing, a public hearing concerning the ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three Los Angeles County Fire Codes. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, President Miles, and City Council. Tonight, I'm presenting the second reading and also public hearing for the ordinance of twenty twenty-three Los Angeles County Fire Codes and finding an exemption from CEQA. On July seventeenth twenty twenty-three, last council meeting introduced ordinance number twelve zero three dash two twenty-three and set the public hearing for adoption by the reference by this meeting in compliance with the state law for adopting codes by reference. Attach, I have attached the ordinance and staff recommends that city council read by title only and wait for the reading and adopt ordinance number twelve zero three dash twenty-three. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions in the staff report? Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing. It's now seven twenty-five. The public hearing is now open. Are there any wishing to testify or provide comments into this matter? Seeing none is now seven twenty-six and the public hearing is now closed. Let's have some discussion. Anyone wants to discuss this matter? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this matter?
I'll motion to adopt ordinance, I guess, twenty twenty-three Los Angeles County Fire Codes and...
Okay, so I guess, I guess we'll go with that. So the motion's been made by Cravis and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. I'm gonna, um... We don't need to read this anymore, right? Okay, all right. With the council, please vote.
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item nine under administration is a memorandum of agreement for administration of the cost sharing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'll be presenting item number nine. It's the memorandum of agreement for administration and cost sharing for implementing the coordinated integrated monitoring program and enhanced watershed management program for the Dominguez Channel watershed. So just a brief background. In August two thousand fifteen, the city joined the Dominguez Channel watershed led by the City of Los Angeles. And we developed an enhanced watershed management program and a coordinated integrated monitoring program for NPDES. In two thousand fifteen and September of that year, the city council approved a MOA between the City of Los Angeles and a group of surrounding cities regarding the administration and cost sharing for implementing these enhanced watershed programs and the coordinated integrated monitoring program for the Dominguez Channel watershed management area. The MOA expired on June thirtieth of this year. So this council item serves to approve the renewal of the MOA through June thirtieth twenty twenty-six, which is in three years. The total cost for all three years is sixty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars, which will come from Measure W. And that concludes the item number nine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the report. Are there any, any discussions on?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
On the first page where it says, "This act was followed by nineteen ninety-two by a provision requiring all Phase One cities populations greater than one hundred thousand to begin implementing best available technologies." We don't fall under that jurisdiction. We don't have a hundred thousand dollar population, a hundred thousand population. And I'm still questioning why it goes from eighteen eight, um, twenty twenty-four to seventeen seven from twenty-four twenty-five, and then it takes a eight thousand dollar jump from twenty-five to twenty-six. And there isn't any breakdown of other cities around us of what they're paying. So I'd like to see some of the breakdown because I don't know why we're in this Phase One. We don't have a hundred thousand population.
I will look into that and answer it for you as soon as I can look into it.
Mayor, council, I can answer. So we participate and it's a regional program, as you know. And just like on LACTA, Los Angeles County Development Authority, because we're a non-entitlement city, we participate with LACTA. Same thing with the watershed. All cities need to, in order to get our permits and be with the State Water Control Board, we need to be, you know, copacetic with all the rules and regulations. So we joined up with LA County. With, with the numbers, we can get the hard numbers if you want us to bring this item back and bring it back for reconsideration and what the other cities are paying. But I, I know when last time this came through, it was consistent when we, the council approved it, I think it was three and a half years ago when we first got into the program. So we can bring all that back if the council thinks it's necessary. Not a problem providing that information.
Mayor, can you continue this?
No, I was thinking, yeah, it would be interesting to see what the other cities are paying as well.
Especially cities with a hundred thousand plus population.
Did we put this amount in our budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, it is in the budget.
Yeah, so it's been approved, this amount has been approved for the...
For this year.
Yes, coming up, yes.
And I believe that it's all relative to the population, but I'll have to look into the numbers to give you an exact figure for each of the other cities.
There's an invoicing schedule. What page is this? It's four oh four of the PDF. And it shows City of LA, County, Carson, El Segundo, Hawthorne, Inglewood, Landale.
Yeah, I saw that. But does it have a breakdown of what they're paying?
Well, it shows their total amount. So CRs, it shows each year. Yeah, because I looked at this chart and I was wondering why La Mida had such a high, um, high cost.
Yeah, there's eighty-one, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's on, it's on thirty, page thirty of thirty-four, Mayor and Council.
Oh, I'm on twenty-four, twenty-four.
Our PDF is four oh four.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, your hard copies. It's page, I think you found it, twenty-four, thirty-four.
Thirty-four, right, yeah, yeah.
So it shows in comparison over the three years what they're all paying. And these numbers are fixed. They will not increase or decrease.
That's correct.
If our population goes down, we're still paying.
Over the three years.
I mean, it's over a three-year period. You can ask for adjustment when we come back.
I believe it's per acre, per acre of land. Per acre, okay.
So it is fixed for the, the life of the, the agreement, three years?
Yes, we're not going to get any increases unless they send us the supplemental.
Right.
Then we would bring that forward to council for reconsideration.
Yeah, because this doesn't have the breakdown of the cities what they're paying. This has increments of, you know. Right here, it says City of Lando, thirty-five fifty-eight. And up here, up here it says Land, twenty-seven fifteen, so.
Table one does show everybody's, yes, table one, page twenty-four. Table one does show everybody's amount.
Yeah, Landale eighteen, La Mida, well, how does La Mida get eighty-eight?
That's what I was questioning.
That's, yeah, that's, I thought it was, yeah, eighty-eight? In contrast to Inglewood fifty-seven, you know, obviously have a larger, much larger population in acre footage. So I'm not sure what the methodology is on this.
By looking at the chart, I think we're the lowest, we're the lowest city.
Yeah, we're the lowest, but I still, I still don't follow the, the logic of having like, like you say, Inglewood is... Inglewood is fifty-seven and La Mida's eighty-eight. And we know La Mida's a like two square miles or something like that, city.
Yeah, it's not much bigger than ours.
And then we're about the same as El Segundo, so that probably makes sense. El Segundo's a little bigger. Twenty-five.
It tells you, it tells you on table two A, universal cost is fifty thousand four hundred and forty-four square acres or area acres. So each city has the number of acres that we're being charged by.
So Landale's one point five, one point nine five acres, one point five nine square miles.
Two point five percent of the, of the hundred percent.
And one acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet.
It also depends on the watershed. So Dominguez Channel, Machado Lake, and LA Harbor, La Mida may be going into some of those watersheds where we, we don't.
Say that part again, so we're not all contributing to the Dominguez, Dominguez watershed, or you're saying?
We're all in the watershed, but some of these cities may be dumping stormwater into different, like it says Machado Lake and LA Harbor, where La Mida probably, I mean, Landale is just the Dominguez Channel. So other cities may be paying more based on that.
If, if you look at...
Okay, got you.
Table two B, it tells you that we're doing two point five percent of the Dominguez Channel waste monitoring.
I see there's...
Yeah, it's two point five zero percent.
And we're not in the Machado Lake chart.
It's not the Dominguez. Percent of Dominguez Channel is shared.
Yeah, we're Dominguez Channel, two percent, as Councilwoman said on table two B. And table two C shows that La Mida has twenty-three percent into Machado Lake. So they have a greater percentage of, of responsibility there.
End and out. Let's draw my, continue with this, bring back the council to vote on. I mean, it's Measure W money, so it's not purely fund money. But it just struck me funny because we, we're not a hundred thousand dollar, a hundred thousand population either.
We'll be, next time we draft this, we bring it back then. Three years from now, we'll be careful on putting the tables into the staff report. We just don't want to overdata, put too much data in the, directly in the staff report, but next time we'll make it clarify better for the council.
I'll make the motion, yeah, that we...
I'll second it.
So the motion's been made by Suarez and we receive?
And enter into the memorandum.
The cost sharing agreement. Seconded by Kearney?
Yes.
Seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, the council, please vote.
For item number nine, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number ten, draft agreement concerning the school crossing guard services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to present in this item from Mike Estes today. So, um, as... I'll be presenting to Mike. Mike's out his voice today. So we, as you know, the school crossing guard contract is up, it's done biannally every two years. Mike has been working hard in his office with the ACMS to develop, to draft an agreement. During that process, it's mentioned in the staff report, everything's increasing. It's not unusual. We've been seeing increases across the board. For the fiscal year, they're looking at, you know, going to one forty-five, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand. They're up by roughly twenty-nine percent, give or take, for the first year. And the second year, they would be requesting an additional twenty-five percent increase. And now, that's not unusual because we're seeing increases across the board now. I just want to point out that Mike has been able to work with them in the previous years and get them to reduce with a, a large savings of up to twenty thousand. So we have had some savings with them. But this time, because of increased costs for them, they're asking for an increase year to year. Recently, though, during Mike's negotiations, they asked for a change in identification clauses. And on all the years I've worked with Mr. Murphy, that was one time he's actually said and actually been a absolute no. We cannot change and transfer that liability onto the city. And Ray, too, she's not here, but yeah, they asked for that change. So we definitely could not change. In view of that, the ACMS responded back to the city and saying that they'd give us a one-year agreement then with the same language. But our concern is like, you know, year to year, we keep bringing these back every year. Staff is recommending that we go with a two-year agreement and leaving the language as, as is, as recommended. Of course, you know, council can provide further direction to the, to staff, but we're recommending a two-year agreement and no changes to the indemnification. We're, we're fine with the upgrades and the requests for the, the crossing guards. Costs are going up and we have saved over the years with them. So this concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions we have at this time.
All right, thank you for the report. Are there any questions?
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to suggest we go with number one recommendation to approve the, attach the underside agreement between us and the crossing guard service. Because I know if we go to one year, they're going to bring this back next year and the share costs is even going to go higher. They want us to, us to fund, cover more than they have. And if that's the case, with only crossing guards, we'll do it ourselves. We're going to end up paying ourselves anyway. So I recommend that we go with a two-year. I'm, I'm signed.
Okay. So you opted for this right here, calculates for year two, a two-year agreement. Year one, year two, okay. Total two-year agreement. I'll agree with that myself. Any other, any, any questions on this?
I'm okay with the two years, but I would like for staff to start looking next year prior to the contract ending for a new company or possibly staff our own crossing guards.
Well, one of the reasons why we're in this, this situation is because they're literally the only game in town. And there might be like one or two minors.
We, we could, I mean, I know City of Santa Monica is a larger city, but they staff their crossing guards.
And so does Long Beach, yeah.
And so it, it, I would like to see a comparison. How much, if we're paying this much, is it going to cost us the same amount of having staff our own part-timers crossing? You know, we, we might need to do that because they're increasing every year twenty-five percent. So maybe we have part-timers doing the crossing guards. Our residents, we, we should offer our residents jobs within the city and crossing guard could be a part-time job. That's my, sorry. If I was allowed to say all that, but I did.
That's very much could be. And that's something that we had, we discussed previously, although we've never moved on it. But yeah, that's definitely something that we should look into because they're literally the only game in town. And that's why they have us, what I call, you know, a captive, you know, you thought I was going to say hostage. A captive of, um, um, audience on, on this issue. And so it's nothing for them to have to increase their rates if they're the only one providing the services. So maybe it is cheaper for us to provide the services ourselves. Who knows? But of course, we will be, of course, assuming the, the liability, which is one of the things I, I do agree with the, the city attorney, absolutely not, you know. Definitely, you know, when you're into a contract, you want someone else to assume the liability that you should assume. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not mad that they suggested that, but, but they're crazy if they think we're going to assume the, the responsibility, the liability or what have you. But obviously, if we have our own program, we would be assuming those liabilities. So that would be factored into the cost, you know, as well, not just the, the hard cost in terms of how much it actually costs in labor. the hard cost in terms of how much it actually costs in labor like that, but it's something we definitely have to look at. Somebody wanted, you wanted to mention something?
I just agreed with the comments, so I'm okay with the two-year.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just wondering, you know, just to bring up, we have received the savings with them because of Mike's negotiation.
Yeah.
Almost twenty thousand dollars, so the, the increase, you know, it's in line.
Yeah, we, yeah, and I appreciate those negotiations, but we, we've, at least in my view, we've experienced a savings based on an artificial inflated price from the start, you know, so. So it's like if I sell you a car, you know, it's, you know, you know, overvalued it, you know, and then I say, you know what, I'll make you a deal.
Right.
Yeah, you can, you can feel good about the situation, like, you know, I, I saved five thousand dollars on this deal. But it was overpriced by ten thousand dollars, you know what I mean, what have you, but that's just my view, whatever, but I do appreciate the negotiation, the savings, the savings, but I, I take your point.
What do we wanna do on this item?
What is, what is the pleasure?
I'm back, your recommendation goes staff, recommendation number one.
Okay, so the motion been made by Mr. Pat Kearney and.
I'll second that.
And seconded by, um, Mayor Pro Tim Quavis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, with the council, please vote, then we go with one.
For item number ten, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, where's the rest of my? Okay, let's have the city manager report, anything you wanna share?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, I'll be quick, brief. Um, so I attended the joint meeting with the City of Torrance, Redondo. I think the COG was there, Jackie was there, as well as Metro staff. I met a whole host of new staff I've never seen before. I want one staff that I was familiar with, the rest were from the CEO's office. Uh, so it was very interesting meeting, I got a couple takeaways, so this'll be interesting for the residents and community. One, we, I learned that actually, and they said this, um, that not only is the cost prohibitive for alternative down Hawthorne, but they even mentioned they don't, do not have an encroachment permit from Caltrans to go down Hawthorne to, to change it, to flip it down, go around the freeway, and that they mentioned also that they don't think they could get one. Plus also, they would need to do NEPA, and they didn't want, wanna do that NEPA review. So that was very interesting, you know, that was, uh, eye-opening there. Um, I thought that was, that was, so they're not gonna go down that, and, and, and in fact, I had started out while we were there and I, you know, uh, I went, you know, I mentioned where our concerns were, and I had mentioned that I didn't think, in my opinion, in my assessment, they were gonna go down Hawthorne Boulevard. That they were gonna, they spent twenty, thirty years assembling that land, down the Condon Corridor, and they were gonna go at grade down that corridor. They didn't say anything, but then when we got into the meeting, Metro brought up that, uh, the challenges with going down that alternative. Um, as a, as a landings planner, I know that's their alternative in their environmental analysis, but they were actually kinda having to really look at it, so I did get that. The second thing they admitted to at this meeting, Metro staff, that as we audit their books and thanks to Haron and his staff, because he went through their books, like, uh, well, we have an auditor, Haron was auditor on the Marymount, so they went through their books, they only have, uh, by two thousand thirty-one, they only have one point five billion dollars at grade. They need one point nine billion at, in two thousand thirty-one, so they don't even have, they won't even have that money at that point right now. And they're sure, so they're, what they did mention, they're looking at options, and, um, and I, and they even said federal funding, and that's when I perked up because, you know, I'm looking to catch them on NEPA too. So I was like, oh, NEPA, oh, you're gonna get federal money, they, they kinda backed off on that, they were sheepish. But no, they're, you know, they're looking at options because they're coming up short. So I, I thought that was very interesting. And then, um, the other thing that occurred to me was, uh, that being there at the building that they're, the site, I've never been to the building. And it occurred to me really, despite all, I mean, we're hearing changes may happen, um, I was really just taken back by the amount of space that they had for that, that green line set aside, and the transit center, how, you know, they have a staff with staff. So I think that they may, who knows where they're gonna go, but it seemed like, you know, the overall, you know, the city manager had inquired about where they're going. There's gonna be an item on the agenda, they're gonna make a decision, um, and maybe change their, maybe a no, no, uh, build option, I don't know. Um, but we'll have to see where they go, I don't know. I don't know with the, seeing that transit center, I really changed my mind on where they're going with it. So I'm not, I'm not sure they're, they're not gonna go forward, I don't know. Um, the one thing that did come out, another one thing, they're not gonna have this meeting in September. So I know everyone's been hoping for the meeting, um, they did say that that was just a, like a place marker. So they're definitely not gonna have the meeting, so. It was, it was, I would have to say it was very tense, um, and the residents will be happy to know I stuck up for Longdale, of course, the council knows. You know, uh, maybe you've already heard, but I, I went at them, so I, I let it, I let it be known that, um, the CEO's office, that we're not too happy with this, that, um, they made, they double-deal the city, and I will say that, I, you know, they did, they promised that we were gonna have a trench. They worked this over and, uh, and I told them, use the purple line handbook. You do the, trying to do the same thing you did in the City of Beverly Hills, you're trying to do the last, you placated us till we get to the end, and then you told our electids, what do you want us to do, we were promised it. So the trenching with the top on it, so they didn't say anything about it, the CEO's office just, just stared at me and looked at me like, you know, I was, you know, from Mars. So, but, you know, I made it very clear, it was very tense in the meeting, um, even Torrance made the comment, wow, you know, and they, they know that, well, our position's very clear. And I made it very clear, ultimately, if the, if this project can't be mitigated, then you know we're gonna end up in state and federal court, and I told them that, you know, you use federal monies on that property, on that, on that project, because all of your projects and the whole metro countywide system have EISs and EIRs, but yet this one doesn't, and originally you did. So I, I put them, I, I put that out there too, so. That's it on that one. Um, the second thing is we've been receiving, residents have asked, we can't really comment too much, and the council cannot get involved on the citations for the fireworks. However, there have been people coming in, we've been working with them. Um, you know, um, we're working with them, they're filing their appeals if they wanna go and hear, hear their, it's not a done deal, like we tell the residents, and they're happy once I tell them that. Like today, a resident was really upset as a property, and he was upset, I said, hey, the, you know, there's a judge, a referee that hears these, so you can go before it and tell them your side of the story. So they were pretty happy, so just so everybody knows, if you get the citation, it's not the end result, you can file the appeal and go forward. And so if people wanna do that, they can, if they've got a citation, uh, received the citation from the city. I think that's it, um, I don't have anything else to add, that's.
Quick question.
Go, go ahead.
About the citations, the citations went to the homeowners or the property owners, not the tenants, correct?
So there was a few, it just depended, so I don't know what the sheriff, the sheriffs were running their own operation, they're different because they're law enforcement, plus they're armed, we were not, the civilian staff. So we sent it to the property owners.
Okay.
The sheriffs actually had undercover, the officers out there, and they were out there getting IDs and being really specific. We, as under our ordinance, were allowed to send it to the property owner or the tenant, if we did, we did get some videos about tenants, that we could actually send it to the tenant. And there were some, just so everyone knows, there were some class pollination on some of the citations, so some of those were dropped.
Thank you.
Just, just two observations on your report, um, yeah, I did have a resident contact me that he was not in town when, uh, he received a, a citation, but he wasn't even in town, or no one was occupying his, his home. And so it's easy for people to, you know, to take up, you know, space in someone's front yard and discharge, you know, or what have you, and, but he received a, um, a citation, I explained to him the, the process and what have you, so he's going, um, through that, um, process as well, that appeals process. My question was that I didn't know the exact answer to, I know the answer, if it was a citation for, for parking, in this case, do you have to pay the bail before you, um, have your hearing, like you do with a parking citation?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
And that's the, that's kind of the sticking point right there, because in this case, if you have a parking ticket, what is a parking ticket, the average parking?
Fifty, sixty bucks.
Okay, in this case, what is, what, what, what is it?
Almost, I think, we don't have any five thousands or all twenty-five hundred dollars.
So like, so that's, that's, that's a lot of money to have to post bail before you heard. Right, so if you don't have the two thousand dollars or what have you, um, you, basically you can't be heard, right? Because you pu- paste that, you, you post that bail, they call it bail, but it's the same as equivalent as the, the citation, right? So you post, post bail, two thousand dollars or whatever it is, and then you have your hearing. Of course, if you prevail, of course, you get the two thousand back, if, if not, of course, the, um, you, you know, they keep the two thousand or what have you. But you have to have the two thousand dollars, that's, that's different from a parking ticket of fifty-five bucks, that's kinda steep. That was the only question I didn't, wasn't really clear on, do you have to post bail, you know, um, first?
Next year, if the council would like to revisit that, we can, I mean, that's our process you guys established, but that's certainly, I mean, some of the residents have brought that up. We've had other residents, hours, that they're gonna, they're gonna beat us because they can prove it, and they'll just put it on their card and get it removed. That's just something.
Yeah, I think we, for, for the.
Next year.
Next year, now, now, this is no, notwithstanding whatever we decide to do for a moratorium or whatever, because you're still gonna have, still gonna have to have an ordinance that prohibits illegal fireworks, right? And define associated with it, so I think that's worth, um, looking at, uh, next year, uh, because I would hate to be a, a resident and get a ticket and I wasn't even at home and I, I expect to have a hearing on it, but I gotta come with two thousand dollars first. That's a lot of money. Okay, so we'll take a look at that. The next one is, um, NEPA, don't they still have to do NEPA even, um, notwithstanding, um, um, the Hawthorne, um, alternative?
You know what they did, Mayor, as you know, when you were here in two thousand eighteen, they were doing a joint document.
Right.
And then somehow they claimed they dropped the federal funding, however, staff and Haron's staff identified.
We found the money.
We found some money, which they're denying. Uh, but we did, and we, uh, were prepared to take them to federal court on NEPA. We think we have a plausible argument to nail them on NEPA.
Okay.
Um, and they were hesitant in that meeting, and they know it, um, she, because she was hesitant about getting federal funding, because they know, Metro knows this, and I'll say this for the residents, now, it's different than CEQA. In NEPA, as you mentioned, Mayor, they have to mitigate for social economic impacts. And how can you do that down there on that Condon Corridor, you can't. What is, what's the measurement, what's the metric? And they, they probably did it in, you know, I'm not a Metro, but if I was in the CEO's office sitting on the top floor there, they're trying to figure out what that metric is, and it's millions. So they don't wanna have to do that, so that's what I, this is just conjecture on my part.
Right.
Because as you know, and the council knows, they originally had a joint EIR and EIS. I don't know how they dropped it and why, they're claiming because they need federal funding, but I, we still think they, they spent some federal funds and therefore NEPA kicks in. So we'll have to see, and by the way, all of their others' projects, and we can, Ms. Osborne can look it up, she, she always sends me stuff. You'll see almost all their projects are all joint documents, except for Longdale.
Right, right, yeah, what's the likelihood that, that project was not a joint document? Okay, thank you for that report.
I have one question to say, yes. Do you know what the, Longdale share would be cost for the Metro to go through Longdale?
Right now, it's three percent, they were looking at, they did mention that, uh, right now it's three percent, but they were looking at changing the guidelines. I have Haron looking at that, see if there's any impacts, or double, sorry.
But the three percent is supposed to be of local return, is if you have a station, a platform.
Correct, Mr. Mayor, but they've updated the guidelines and looking at changing it, there's some.
So they're trying to get out three percent even though we don't have a platform.
Yeah, they're trying to make it for design and phase, they brought that up at the meeting. Uh, I have Haron still looking at it, see, they had some guideline updates, but, you know, we'll still challenge him on that too.
But that wasn't written in, it's hard to belabor this, that wasn't written in the measure?
Yeah, they wanna revise Measure M.
But, but you have to have a vote.
Exactly.
To do that, so you can't say, you can't change the formula, the three percent formula, without taking it back to a vote.
That's correct.
You understand the three percent formula was if you was having a platform.
And that's correct, Mayor, that's why we didn't make any comments on it, I have Haron looking at it when they notified us. In fact, they sent me an email asking me if we're gonna make any comments, and right now we're still reviewing that, because I knew that Measure M is tied to votes, voting, the voters, so I didn't make any changes. They're making recommendations, they wanna, something like that could be huge, because at one point nine billion dollars, at, you know, fifteen or whatever percentage it could be, I don't know, well, that could be millions to the city. That impacting the costing us to pay for their, their drain.
And so if this doesn't go till twenty thirty-one, we're gonna have those white elephants sitting Redondo and Torrance, and it makes them good homeless shelters for them. And Redondo and.
Well, and, and I just wanna say, you know, no, no offense to the Metro staff, because we're not blaming them, but, uh, you know, it, it is, it is kinda challenging when you see that huge transit center that's not too far from here they built, and wonder, you know, are they gonna build this thing or not? Because I, I, I don't work over there, but I would assume they were coordinating with Metro before they even put any gr- uh, you know, dirt, moved dirt down there.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, you know what I'm saying, for that transit center? So why would they go forward with that without first talking to Metro, saying, hey, is this green line coming? So I don't know, we'll, we'll see what the council says down there, it all remains to be seen, and, and, uh, Redondo was very adamant and concerned with the project, of course. They would, you know, the majority of the questions came from the city manager of Redondo.
Very good. All right, thank you for that report, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, let's hear from, uh, Councilwoman.
All I can say is, stick with our, we don't want Metro, that's. Longdale has had thirty years of saying, we don't want this project, would you, let's just continue with that. Okay, places and things that I have done. I went to a Contract Cities meeting in Redondo Beach, which, with Pat, and I also attended the National Night Out here in the City of Longdale. Great job to both Public Works and to Municipal Services, and to Mike Estes Department sitting over there. Um, staff did a great job on that event, and those people that I saw at the event all commented what an incredible evening. It's a nice way to spend a summer evening, so thank you.
I also attended the Contract Cities Board Director Meeting at King Harbor Yacht Club. It took Ronda and I thirty-eight minutes to find this yacht club, which is three miles away, but we did find it. Uh, National Night Out was a great event, I enjoyed it, I liked seeing Maxine there again, and the back-to-school backpack giveaway, joy was great. Tell Steve, thanks for the beer garden and the full bar afterwards, it was great. And with that, I'll turn, turn over to you, back to you, Robert.
Um, I just had National Night Out, um, just wanna reiterate, it was a great event, thank you to staff, thank you to all the vendors, uh, community groups that came out, um, and then I did have one item I wanted to agendize, um, it's with election times coming up, um, it's with regards to campaign financing. I wanna see if it's possible, if we can allow electronic submission for the campa- campaign finance forms. Um, you know, just reducing paper, they get uploaded to the system faster, so I wanna see if we can allow that, um, and with that, I'll pass it along.
All right, I attended the South Bay COG Board of Director Meeting, uh, we discussed, uh, Jackie's contract, she is now an employee of the COG, she's not, no longer an advisor, so she does work for the COG now. Um, I also attended the League of California Cities, LA Division Board of Director Installation Ceremony. Um, Sheriff Luna was the main speaker, um, his presentations are great, his feedback was great, and it will also be helping our cities all his, uh, his ideas as soon as they get approved, uh, by the Board of Supervisors. Um, and the, uh, Steve Cooley did the installation of officers, um, very nice event in Long Beach, um, at the Maya Hotel, beautiful view, it took me an hour and a half to get there, but it was worth it.
Hmm.
You know, once I got there, very nice. And I did attend the National Night Out, uh, thank you staff for a great, um, event, and I can't wait for the next one. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, uh, ask here from the dais, if we could step up the firework, um, issue on bringing it back as soon as possible, since December is right around the corner, just like what I just said. I don't wanna wait till October or November to start talking about a moratorium, the sooner that we get this thing going, the better. We spent all of our time on chickens, we should be about done with chickens, maybe we can move on to fireworks.
We'll put something together, uh, Mayor and Council, and bring it forward.
Thank you.
Before December.
Yes.
I actually.
Yes, ma'am.
Forgot to mention something, uh, City of Redondo Beach is having a rally to discuss a strategy for the crucial Metro Board of Director Meeting. Um, it's gonna be this coming Saturday, August twelfth, from two to three-thirty PM at Franklin Park in North Redondo at Inglewood Avenue and Fisk Lane. So everyone that is opposing to this metro, please join Redondo on the, with the rally. They, they want all our support to be there, so, once again, it's gonna be this coming Saturday, August twelfth, from. So, once again, it's gonna be this coming Saturday, August twelfth, from two to three-thirty at Franklin Park. Um, they're located on Inglewood Avenue and Fisk Lane, but you get more information at rightofsay.com. That's R.I.G.H.T.O.F.S.A.Y. dot com. So, everybody, we all have a voice, please attend this rally. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure she sent it out to everyone, you, you probably have it in your, in your email. Yeah. You're good, all right. So, I, I attended the annual meeting of the, um, California Joint Insurance Authority in, um, Orange County, where we ratified, um, our Board of Directors, um, for this year. Um, pretty much, um, we kinda, um, the same, um, um, board members, they're doing a, a great job, um, for municipalities and special districts. I also attended the, um, regular meeting of the Los Angeles County Sanitation District. There was nothing out of the ordinary there, just... Um, also, I attended the National Night Out. I wanna thank the staff, and Mike Estes and his, um, team, um, uh, and Michael Reyes and his team, um, for National Night Out. They did a great job, I mean, it seemed like it's growing, um, every year. Um, it was a very good, um, event, um, this year, so thank everyone, and thank those who volunteered on, for the, the booths there for National Night Out. And of course, our, um, firefighters and our deputies were on hand as well, so it was a, a great event. Uh, I wanna bring something to everyone's attention. I'm, I'm teaming up this year to do a backpack giveaway and health screenings with, um, an organization, um, it's called Special Needs Networks. Um, they specialize in providing, um, services, um, to adults and young adults that have special needs. And although this event is not, um, um, just for, um, those with special needs, the Special Needs Networks do a wonderful job, um, serving the communities with special needs. So, on the, um, Saturday, August twenty-sixth, at Jane Addams Park, from ten AM to two PM, they're gonna have their, their backpack giveaway, health screenings, haircuts, food and beverages. They're gonna have fruits and vegetables that you can take with you. Of course, you can get your, your blood pressure, um, screening and glucose monitors, monitoring as well, and a lot of different, um, free things, qualify for a free phone or tablet, okay? According to this flyer, they're gonna have a petting zoo as well, and a pony rides. Okay. That's worth the price of admission, it's free, by the way. And, and so, I wanna encourage, um, all those who are available Saturday, August twenty-sixth, from ten AM to two PM at Jane Addams Park, uh, which is located at one five one one four Fremont Avenue here in the City of, of Longdale. And that's, um, myself, Assembly Member Tina McKinner, and the Special Needs Network, along with the Foundation, which is the Jewish Community Foundation of Los Angeles. Thank you. And with that, that's all I have. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six-thirty PM on Monday, August the twenty-first, in these here chambers. It is now at eight oh seven, and we are adjourned.